Good evening. We're good. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hundred and Hundred Democrat and for your newspapers on or about January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at Irving Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too, posted on the municipal website. Provides and municipal clerk and distributes all persons of any requesting copies at the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and deformed appropriations to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's hear one, please rise as you are able to the flag salute.
Fledgling agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, Mayor Kara?
Here.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Here.
Mr. Campion is excused. Mr. Doshna?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Echol?
Here.
Mr. Weintraub?
Here.
Mr. Cho?
So I saw his list move on.
Okay. So should it be your moment? Ms. Gazinski?
It's low.
It is low.
Yeah, we were having problems with it last night.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerico is excused. Ms. McNamara?
Here.
Mr. Troutman?
Here.
Okay, hold on just a second. I think it might be.
So I'm gonna raise a bond?
I think it's going to the wrong output actually.
That would be the problem because Michael tried everything last night to get that going. You're actually moving the microphone.
Kara, can you talk?
Yeah, can you hear me?
No, it's not it. Choose some room. Kara, try again.
How about that?
All right, not, that's not doing it. No, something else.
Okay.
Um.
The volume down, it's just that.
No.
No.
No. I mean, the volume is in zoom, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
One, two, three, testing, testing, one, two, three.
That's her. Here we have a laptop.
What did you do?
Sorry, I don't have a TV actually.
I'm. And we need to write this down.
Do you want me, so I'm losing my voice, but can you hear me?
There we are.
Okay, so I, whatever I did is working.
But you don't know what you did.
I do not. All right, that's fine.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, it's working right now, so hold on a breath. No, I, I work on that next, um. So, or at least through the semester. So, uh, thank you all, you are. For those who are, there's, for those who are gonna watch this recording later, I hope you're enjoying yourselves. Uh, we will begin our meeting as we usually do with a period for public comments on items not in front of the board currently. If anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hands. I'm gonna ask everyone, please, to make sure you're using a microphone.
Lois Stewart, Flemington Borough.
You can sit, Lois.
You can sit if you like, because there's no one else here.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, I learned something that I didn't know, and that was that the BSD apartments, which I refer to as the Spice Factory, had acquired another lot, and so the project was going to be larger. Is that correct?
We really can't be talking about a pro, an application without them, that's pending in front of us during public comment. We really shouldn't do that. Kara's gonna cut me off.
Yep.
Um, I would, I would say perhaps you can reserve this for when that applicant is in front of the board, which we think will be on the twentieth of March.
Well, my concern is, uh.
We, we really, Lois, I'm so sorry, but we really can't.
Well, I want to know, how do you get your oar in the pond before the project is already done? Because I've been down this road too many times where I have concerns, and it come and it's kind of already decided.
Public hearing for that is tentatively scheduled for March twentieth.
Well, will that be when the information is presented?
If the, the application materials are currently on file, you can look at them all right now. There's a physical copy here in Borough Hall, as well as digital copies on the website. Any member of the public can look at them, and if there are any changes, those would get announced, um. Those files would be updated or it would be announced to the committee. But I really don't wanna go any further into any details.
The committees work with the applicants prior to their submission to the board?
Lois, Lois, the hearing is scheduled for the twenty-eighth. You're welcome to look at the plans and all the application documents that Eileen has on file, and that's the appropriate time to come talk about this.
Yes, but I'm just asking. Kara, Kara, she's asking a, a.
A different question.
She's asking a general question, and it's more of a procedure.
So, so the answer is yes, once an application is made, copies are sent to all boards and commissions that have boarding to Borough ordinance jurisdictions provide feedback. HPC, Shatree, and Environmental are the ones that are the, that generally are the ones, but whatever else is out there.
Yeah, because it's the last meeting. Uh, it was said that the HPC was moving the meeting the next night, and they would discuss it at that time.
And I believe that they have.
And so.
They issued a report.
And they issued a report.
And so is that report part of the material that I'll be able to see?
I believe it's in the files.
Yeah, I printed it out, it's in the files. Actually, there are so many other copies since a lot of the commissions, um, this application submitted all of their, like, twenty-one sets. So we have some extra ones. If the board is okay, we can, you can, I can send them home with you, so you can have the, the time to take a look at them. I refuse for this, so she can have my whole set.
I just would like to see it because I do know.
Understood. So, so yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Lois. Um. Seeing as there are no other members of the public and there's nobody else online, um. Uh, there is one person online. So we are in period of public comment. If you'd like to speak, uh, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, item two, any adjourned mayor comments?
I don't have any today. Thank you, Mr. Doshna.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item three, council comments.
I only have one comment, and that is uh, our subcommittee, um, right now has homework for Thursday, and apparently we've got an F at this point because none of us have responded yet. So, um, our, our teacher says that we need to do our homework before Thursday.
And that's not me for once. Okay, uh, thank you. Can I just ask a question from a, a council perspective?
Yeah.
Is there a, a calendar for when the meetings get published on, on YouTube so we could watch and then go, you know?
Well, no, there isn't because, um, a couple of the council members are posting, and it's not required by law, so um, they go up and they go up. I have nothing to do with it. I think it's, uh, the council president and council manager, who's Eddie or Kevin Terrence posting it. But I think, I'm not sure, under Daniel's law, they think currently, I'm not sure if the court system is posting them, but I'm, I'm not costed.
Oh, well, because I know the last one, two thirteen, was, uh.
Is it still up?
Yeah.
Christ, and then he gets. The last time, I can say it took, it took forty.
Oh, alright.
Seventy-two hours or so. No, there's, it's, it's things are by volunteer selected officials. Right. That's correct.
Alright, uh, item four, HPC comments. Uh, Dennis, is there anything to report?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good, good.
Oh, okay, um, so the HPC did provide input on Spice Factory. Um, so just encourage everyone to read that before the public comments. Um, I know their attorneys signed it back. Um, the other thing, it's part of the ordinance update committee, um, the HPC, you know, I'm gonna be bringing some proposed changes to the historic map um, that was teed up before. So we're gonna bring that to the subcommittee. And then also, um, we put a save the date notice on the Borough website and Facebook page for the Flemington House Tour. Um, it's June third from eleven to five, still a lot of work to do. Uh, save the date, spread the word, and if anyone's interested in helping out either the day of or in the planning, we're definitely looking for assistance. We're really excited. It's gonna be a great event. That's it.
Thanks, Dennis. June third, right, is that what I got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, Saturday, June third, eleven to five, rain or shine.
Money, money feed in people's houses. Um. Alright, item five on our agenda, approval of minutes from the February fourteenth meeting. Those were previously circulated by email. Do I have a motion? The second move.
Second, go.
Thank you. Any discussion or clarification on the minutes?
Mayor Kara? Yes. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item six on our agenda this evening is a resolution, uh, PB twenty twenty-three dash oh six, one sixty-one Dulce LLC, which is blocks thirty-seven lots fourteen and fifteen, which is memorializing approvals granted by this board for the Dulce Restaurant at one sixty-one Main Street. Um, Kara, can you, uh, walk us through, please?
Yes. So the resolution was presented to the applicant's council and professionals, as well as the board's professionals. Um, the applicant's council had three minor comments, which I'll place on the record now, so we can amend the resolution accordingly um, for execution. Um, the fifth whereas paragraph on page two must be amended to add John Arlanda as the other attorney. If we recall, there were two attorneys from that firm that presented on behalf of the applicant. Uh, Robin was second, John was first hearing. Uh, the next change will be paragraph A one on page three, the first paragraph. We're going to delete the second to last sentence and replace it with the applicant owns both properties and allows shared parking. That's just to reflect the shared parking arrangement that will be memorialized by way of a parking and access agreement on the two lots. And.
I'm sorry, Kara, where is that again?
That is page three. If we go to paragraph A one, the first paragraph of that section.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, so that will now read, the second to last sentence will read, the applicant owns both properties and allows shared parking. And then the last change is the next paragraph under that same section, same page. The last sentence will be deleted and changed to the parking in the rear of lot fifteen is shared by both lots. So the changes were just add the other attorney and just clarify the shared parking arrangement, which again will be memorialized and recorded by way of a, uh, easement agreement that the applicant will provide to, uh, us for review and approval.
Okay, so um, those who are eligible to, uh, participate are those who, um, uh, voted for, um, the applications. So that's Kara, Campion, Engelhardt, Cook, Doshna, Giffen.
Semino.
And Semino, sorry, that. Um. So, uh, can I get a motion and a second move?
Engelhardt, second.
Is there any, uh, further discussion or question?
Mayor Kara? Yes. Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Alright.
I'll amend the resolution with those changes, as well as the motion, the second, and the voting on memorialization and send that back.
Thanks, Kara. Um. Yeah, as soon as that's, I'll sign off on that.
Okay.
We wanna let them get it published.
Yeah, I had the notice prepared to, to go, um, it all depends on the other resolutions.
Yep, yeah, sounds good. Okay, um, item seven on the agenda is review of Borough Off-Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two, which I'm gonna make sure I've got the right one the right way. Um. Oh, two. And we're gonna handle these, I, I mean, I know we have to talk about this separately, but is it oh two or oh four? This is what I'm confused.
Oh, two is the ordinance.
Right.
Right.
And then there was oh four is the other.
The second ordinance.
The second ordinance.
Yeah, oh two pertains to the number, oh, four pertains to the location.
Okay, so Kara, from a from a legal perspective, can we handle these together, or should we have separate discussions?
I, I think we should definitely have separate votes because there may be recommendations with regard to one that there may not be with regard to another. If you wanna discuss them together, uh, I don't have any problem with that because there is, I would presume some overlap between number and location. Um, so we could discuss them together, but definitely let's do separate votes with regard to, uh, recommendations and findings of, uh, findings that it is not substantially inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Beth.
Okay. So, um, in keeping with that, we have two ordinances. Um, so in keeping with what Kara just said, we have two ordinances that are for the planning board tonight, uh, post introduction by the council. Both of them are amendments, rather minor amendments, although not inconsequential amendments to your cannabis ordinance. Number oh two, uh, has a brief change on page five of six of the ordinance, and if you look toward the bottom third, you'll know a couple of items in bold under section two. And so what this states is that there are limitations on the number of cannabis retailers and the number of cannabis cultivators. And so this change states the limitation is inclusive of, and then specifies recreational dispensaries as well as medical and medical dispensaries and alternate centers, which have not previously been specified for the number. And that applies to, uh, both the retailer for adding recreational dispensaries for clarity, and also for cannabis cultivator, which adds recreational cannabis cultivator for clarity. Um, and so the, as I said at the outset, the ordinance is pre-free. Uh, the second ordinance, and then we can talk about master plan because the same, uh, the same discussion applies. The second ordinance is in regard to the location of cannabis, and this is number oh four. And so if you take a look at page two of three, um, it's not in bold, but take a look at sections one, two, uh, five, ten, and eleven. Um, and what you see is a new, uh, requirement that'll be, that will be applicable to them on the adoption of the ordinance, which is primary access for the, uh, the cannabis uses shall be from a state or county roadway. And so what this does is it really limits the, it takes these cannabis uses, which is currently permitted in our, in our non-residential districts, which include local, state, and county roads. And this adds another requirement to state that the cannabis use with cannabis retailers, uh, for example, can only be permitted on state and county roads. And so it, uh, pushes these uses towards locations which have, uh, I think, I think I can say universally elevated, uh, road access and road capacity. And so that's the, the purpose or the, uh, the proposed changes in ordinances oh two and oh four. And so the planning board's charge is to determine whether or not these ordinances are substantially inconsistent with your master plan. Of course, we've just adopted a master plan in late twenty twenty-two, and uh, cannabis is addressed in the master plan, but not in terms of recommendations. So we don't have any specific recommendations for how cannabis should be treated, or perhaps how your existing ordinances should be changed. It does recognize that these are newly permitted uses. It's a new, uh, state law that was adopted, um, in the last couple of years. And it also recognizes in your economic development element that that is one of the new and newish and trending industries, if you will, that we're seeing, and that Hundredan County has seen across its member municipalities. So as I view the master plan, uh, against these proposed ordinances, I don't see any inconsistency uh, with the recommendation regarding cannabis. As I said, there are none. Uh, so I don't see that it's substantially inconsistent. The only thing the board, I think, might wanna consider from a master plan perspective is whether or not you find that the recommendations are inconsistent with more general recommendations in town regarding economic development in retail businesses and uh, commercial businesses generally. But as I said, there's nothing specific in your master plan that addresses where these uses, or how many of these uses, much less where or how many of other uses should be located that you can perhaps compare against.
Can I ask one clarified question? Um. Primary access shall be, you know, from a state or county roadway, um, that's in, that's in ordinance oh four.
Mm-hmm.
Can you? For, for everyone, so we're all talking about the same thing. What are the, what are the roads that actually fall under that category?
So that's fair. Um, so it's, uh, the obvious ones, I think, are Route two oh two, Route twelve, and then we have also, uh, portions of Main Street and Walter Fran that are also county Route five thirteen. Twenty-five, twenty-four, sorry.
So. Which section of Main Street is five twenty-three?
It is.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Um, when you, I, I just have something to add about the county jurisdiction that I researched.
Yeah, please, Jay, go ahead, that would help.
Um, I researched how many miles of county road are in the borough, and I came up with zero point one seven miles. And then I was attempting to find where that zero point one seven miles of county road was, and I could not find it. So I called Mike Campion to ask him if there's any county road, uh, roads that are on county jurisdiction, the entire borough, and he said there are none, there are zero roads under county jurisdiction in the borough.
I can confirm that as a former freeholder, there are none in Flemington. There are sources out there that will tell you that Walter Fran is a county. I guess they're not correct. I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to our traffic engineer on that topic, but if you if you, I, I just read last week about how Walter Fran is a county road, so presumably that's incorrect. So I don't, I'm not correct or different, uh, disagree with Jay.
I would dare have a still dedicating you a very, I'm more, uh, uh, noting the inconsistencies.
But, but, but this, but this is not saying that, uh, it's under the jurisdiction of, there are, so this just says has to be accessed by a county road. We have county road five twenty-three and county road. It does not say whose jurisdiction it's under.
But we don't have any county roads, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's sort of a distinction without a difference, um, whether it's a county road or whether it's county jurisdiction. It's, it, it would, you know, Route two oh two is, is a state highway and also under the state's jurisdiction. It's just different terminology.
Five twenty-three goes, it's Park Avenue goes through.
Yes, not anymore.
Not anymore.
Not, yes, right, and county road in more than forty or fifty years.
It used to have old, there were old signs up, and folks would, trucks would come through.
Correct.
And we stopped that probably twenty years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, because the signs were old and outdated, but they were on there, and so folks would the trucks would be coming, the trucks would be coming off of Certainsville Road, off the divorce circle, they come up Main Street, which is a mess. And then they, and then they would try to make a turn on Main Street or turn on Park. And it was a disaster. It wasn't working.
The county ceded over to the borough at their request, five twenty-three and Borough Land, when my father was elected to the town council, and he left office in nineteen eighty. So, it's been a very long time, and it is technically, it was historically five twenty-three. It is no longer.
So then this ordinance would be inconsistent based on that, because if we don't have any county roads, then why would we have an ordinance that would say it was allowed on county roads? Uh, flat out, it's wrong, right? I, I correct me if I'm correct.
Well, is that, is that an inconsistency, or is that just an error?
I think it's a, I don't know that it's inconsistency because it doesn't create a conflict with your master plan, but it's.
But we should recognize it that it is incorrect.
Yeah, I think that's a recommendation that the planning board could make if we don't have county roads, uh, anymore.
Is that a zero point one seven miles could, could that be considered that? That little tiny bit of Walter Fran that crosses into, uh, Flemington right at the end? Because you have.
No, I checked it. It's, it's not, there, there's zero and.
Okay, let me ask another question. Isn't South Main Street a county road? South of the Main Street Circle for the five hundred feet towards where it's at.
Yeah, maybe that's where that point oh one seven or point one seven is. That little.
If I can just make another suggestion, um, it's possible that could change. You know, probably not likely, but it's possible that that could change. So instead of having to amend it down the road, if it's not applicable now because there aren't any, then there's nothing to apply it to, but down the road, the intention is for it to have access off something other than a municipal roadway. So that leaves it open for that possibility down the road.
But, but in this, in sections one and two, saying that you can locate it in the TC zone or the visit, community business district, so long as it is on a state or county roadway. If there are no state and county roadway, then by default, it is not allowing it within our TC zone or within our community business district.
Except, and, and that if we were to amend our match to put TC designation on sections of town that did have state or county roads in the future, it wouldn't require them to change the ordinance. Like, the, 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 the rationale of writing it this way, even though it may literally be zero parcels at the moment, if we say that the use of the TC district is consistent with, with, if we're saying that the TC's uh, district is consistent with this kind of use, which is a planning question, and we're okay with, you know, that kind of thing, and then down the road, if the TC district were somehow extended into other parts of town, they would have to go back and change it.
But our traffic engineer is saying that there's no part of town that has a state or county road.
No, no, there's state roads.
State, yeah.
So state.
Yeah.
We do state road.
Well, to, to.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. So it's just the incorrect is counted.
At the moment, yeah. Well, it's, I'm not sure.
Following on from that, my question would be, aren't we overtly restrict, maybe, it is an extreme restriction on where these can happen. Correct?
Yeah.
Because, well, I'm also saying the main access is the main access into the shop is, of shop, he's always called the shop.
So, right.
Thank British. Um. If the main access is from, is not from the circle, the main access would be.
That was gonna be my, that was my other question for Jay. What does primary mean?
Where, and which would restrict, and where, where could we have one if we put this in place, given that we don't have any cancer codes and we're just relying on state roads? We restrict to business development of, and in a large part of the town, in a large part of our development districts, I mean.
Right, because they take the shops, for example. The shops main entrance, as it were, with primary signage is, is Rayo. And while there is a driveway
two, two.
on two oh two, north of Dunkin' Donuts, the tire place.
Yeah.
That's not, is that, just what does primary access mean? And Jay, when you see an ordinance that talks about primary access, what does that mean from the, from a transportation perspective?
Uh, I think it means access, the, the highest order of roadway access that the property has. So I think shops would qualify because they have um, the highest order roadway they have access to is the state highway. So I, I, I would say that's a primary access just because of the, uh, category of roadway.
So Jay, do we need the word primary, or can we just say A access from can, and access to the development B, rather than stating it has to be the primary? To, to.
Yes, I do. I, I, I think that would be acceptable, but, yeah, I think that would be acceptable because it would be access to a state highway, which is a high, the highest order of roadway you have in the borough.
Right. If that's a recommendation, I think the board might wanna state one or more access points or points of access shall be from a state or county road, rather than access.
That means it would have to be two accesses from a state or county road.
No, 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 one or more.
One or more, or at least one.
Okay, just to, just to make clear that if there are multiple access points and one is not a county or state road, that's still acceptable.
Okay, whichever word in you.
Yeah.
Cover that.
That would just be a recommendation. We're not charged with cleaning up the errors in, in this. But we can still make recommendations that say, hey, listen, our, in our consistency or non-consistency, Jack, it's X, but you may want to consider, you know, making these suggestions, but from a consistency with the master plan, and again, I get that everybody is scared, just like everybody was scared of liquor stores in nineteen twenty-nine. This is, that reminds. This is the remind me of like prohibition answer against, but to Karen's point, overly, this is our most restrictive. To say it's it, where our master plan calls for vibrant downtown and, you know, uh lots of shopping and activities, I'm I'm paraphrasing. Is it, is it a slippery slope to say that it's um not inconsistent, but then what's next? I'm assuming liquor stores, because they're, they're right here, right? You buy cannabis, you buy liquor. Again, we're not used to it, just like in nineteen twenty nine, people weren't used to buying liquor um in a store. So is is that, am I going too far? Because I understand that we're all scared, right? It's a brand new thing and nobody wants this in their backyard, just like in nineteen twenty nine. Nobody wanted liquor stores on Main Street and so on and so forth. So like it just seems like it's not consistent with our view of a vibrant community.
Can I, can I build on that if I could? But you didn't talk about the section on on oh four, sections three, four and six, which repeals this use from DV one, DV two and the VAS district. And could you talk about how our goals and objectives for those zones might be impacted by this ordinance?
So our goals and objectives uh generally talk about concentrate, not generally, but specifically to talk about concentrating retail service, entertainment uses, which contribute to creating a vibrant downtown. To the the retail portion of Main Street and nearby surrounding properties, mentions Liberty Village, Trenchable Junction. And so I think that goal is relevant for that. There are I think that is the most relevant goal. Uh employ strategies to encourage community and economic development within the borough, that as well as much more generalized. But number eleven, which speaks to concentrating retail entertainment service uses uh certainly applies to the DV district and the VAS district. And so to the point about uh eliminating potential active uses from the intended active areas of downtown, I don't know that it's slippery slope, but it certainly has an impact of that. Um as we eliminate options for activity in tenants.
I guess it is, I mean.
Slippery slope, I think, I think I see the the direct connection with liquor stores and any place serving a drug. Um those two are certainly connected. The one, the only thing I want to highlight is the fact that cannabis right now is being treated very specially in the state. People are thinking about it for the first time, we're regulating it very differently. Um it has some, some similarities, the way that we think about uh alcohol and liquor licensing in the state, but it's but it's very much uh a different animal and different from a zoning and a regulation standpoint um for municipalities. So I get the connection and the concern about loss of other, other uses, but I do think that cannabis is really standing on its own these days with how municipalities are are regulating it and how they're thinking about where these types of uses should be located.
And in your opinion, you don't think this could be used in the future as setting precedent for any um uh adult drug, alcohol, um in the future. Well, if you're not going to allow cannabis, since you didn't allow cannabis, let's, I I don't know. And again, I don't want to be overly, but but this is so restrictive. I'm I'm racking my brains and saying, I know we have one cannabis dispensary now, which seems to be fine. And I think there's rumblings of another somewhere, and we said there's only two, so it's sort of a move point. Liquor stores are already restricted by the state because you you can't get them when we have the 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 handful that we have. So I'm just trying to wrap my brains around it of, I'm scared of it too because I don't know it, right?
That's a good point, is that unlike liquor, it's not regulated, the number is not regulated by the state. Each individual municipality has that choice and to best point, so right now it is special. And that's okay. And uh if someday in the future, it's considered more mainstream or, and I think that that's probably a poor choice of words, because it 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 probably is mainstream at this point. Or more, eh more comfortable. We can always, we can consider adjusting an ordinance in the future, but I think this reflects the current imagery of cannabis, eh you know, in in and uh in the in the time, it's a kind of a a date point in time, we're we're documenting how uh this municipality want uh wants to look at cannabis at this point in time. But unlike the state, we need to make this.
And and in a nutshell, it basically says, even though there are errors in in the verbiage, it basically says on a highway. Right?
Yeah.
On a highway, on a state highway. Right? I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff you look to, it repeals it here, puts it here, but it really is a state highway.
Yeah.
So, so so Jay, could you weigh in a little bit, the, we had some of this testimony for uh Aunt Mary's application, but can you just when you were doing that review, just because I think we've got a few new new folks here, um what is the trip generation, like what, how many, what what's the car impact uh of this use that we've seen in other jurisdictions, like that it's been documented by the transportation engineers?
So so the trip rate on a per thousand square foot basis is on the higher end of uh retail trip rate. So it'd be like a, almost a restaurant category type trip rate is what I would compare it to, something that you know. So if you're in a strip center and a restaurant takes one of those units, you're gonna see a little higher trips per thousand square feet out of that unit than you would out of, you know, something more generic.
Would you have a concern about the trips on Main Street or Stangle or some, one of the, a local road that has, say, restaurant uses on it? For this use?
Uh I I I would because um thi- this use, at least in the beginning, would tend to attract the crowd, is what's been experienced. So uh you would want to have somewhere where, you know, parking could spill out, sort of like shops. I mean, shops was an ideal spot because of the large mixture of uses where parking can be shared. If one thing's busier than another, you always have a place to go with the parking.
Uh Jay, quick follow up to that, um from a trip generation perspective. Uh I know we're talking about cars, but we also have a a goal to become a walkable community. So I'm thinking, would a trip generation, call it walking, biking um cars be more or less than a laundromat?
I wasn't ready for that question.
And again, I I I and I, my only comment, my point on that is eh I'm really struggling with you, all of our goals put together because I believe that it is a new industry, none of us knows. I mean, I've heard that, I was at the council meeting when they talked about it, people talking about appointments and this and that and 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 again, I don't see it. I've been over at Pancharo's right next to Aunt Mary. I don't see, there are no lines going out. There are more lines at the bread company on a Saturday morning with fifty to seventy five people online and cars everywhere on Main Street. But because novelty, so what your, your, your testimony is because it's a novelty business that it could have more trip generations in the beginning.
Yes, and and the, and the the initial trip research shows, again, the trip and parking rate is on the higher end of retailers. And the rates are similar to a restaurant.
But again, just to say from a consistency of the master plan perspective, just trying to make sure that we can we can definitely be able to um have teeth in whatever we say. And again, I love the new bread company, but it is an enormous um uh magnet for people, that's what we want. Literally seventy five people waiting on Main Street with no parking for a mile for bread, which is great. So again, from a trip generation perspective, we're, we're to consider, from a consistency perspective, that trip generations are similar to a restaurant.
Yes.
Okay.
Jay, I'm just curious, have you seen any uh trend reports about these uses? Because I think anecdotally, I hear that uh when uh dispensaries, for example, were first opening, and there were huge lines because there were just a handful of opportunities and folks were traveling for it. And that you see less and less occurrences of these huge lines because now there are so many more dispensaries around the state. But is, have you seen any data to back that up?
I haven't seen that come through yet.
Okay.
So my question is on on the issue of the the discussion we had earlier about the five twenty twenty. Did the writers of the ordinance, did we understand that? Because I know when I read this, I thought, okay, highway and that can, that's okay, it can be on the strip, the Main Street because it's the five twenty three, because I still thought it was the five twenty three, who Walter Fran, who wrote a town. The, that then opened up more of the town. So my concern is if, did, did the, were the writers aware that that would, that strip would not then be allowable under this? And and then, and then to that point then, I guess my concern is, I I understand initially they want to keep it on a highway, I say, but also to Todd's point, trip generation could be foot traffic generation, which is one of our goals. And by restricting it not to the five twenty three, for instance, we are we are on the restrictions on the VAS zone, et cetera. It is limiting the use, um the, the allowable use areas to very specific areas on the edge of town essentially, right? Um and we're not allowing it in the future when, when everyone's calmed down. That we are not allowing it in those and therefore restricting business development away from the highway area. Um which we have a goal to, I I I don't see in the future, when we've all settled down, why there can't be one where it's in town, but not off of a high, and I'm worried that we're restricting ourselves too much at this point. Um I don't know if I actually added a question.
Question initially about the intent. The author's intent, thank you. So the author of the ordinance was the clerk. The clerk administrator wrote this ordinance. I did point out to him that there were no county roads in the borough, to my knowledge. Uh he did not change the language, so I could, I could only opine that, okay? Um so he didn't feel that was significant enough to take it out because he wanted to get it published and get it up. Um regarding the intent, and I'm speaking for the council, because of course I don't get a vote on governing body on this ordinance, but the council I believe was very caught off guard that the DV one two and VAS districts were included in this legislation originally. That when they discussed it on council, they did not want it in those districts because they wanted to it far away from residential zones. And um it was generated from a conversation about the next dispensaries, I mean, or dispensary and where they were looking, which specifically is over um in the old um dance plaza, and there's also some interest um uh in the vicinity of the mall itself, in in one of the outbuildings over there. So um so the, these these uses are already looking at the highway be significantly, I think, because of the parking issue. Um because, you know, there is a no idling law in the state of New Jersey, um and we don't have a lot of street parking in a, you know, in a lot of areas, so there those businesses are already gravitating out into the highway zone itself. And so in those discussions, when we were looking at the ordinance, there were members of council that were absolutely shocked that it was in there. So this is really council driven. I don't want to keep doing that this is my personal agenda, um because I know I've been accused of that on social media. But um and then it was represented by um councilman, councilwoman Eglar that the planning board itself did not really feel strongly about having it in the DV one two and VAS district. So um the council feels strongly about not having it anywhere where children can be around school, which is Stangle, where the ice cream shop is and the dance studio is, and really don't want it downtown. Um just adjacent to like housing neighborhoods and whatever, it they feel pretty strongly, they they don't want it in those, they don't. This point in time, as the councilwoman said, um it can always be changed in the future if this becomes much more mainstream and commonplace um or accepted or whatever, but at this point in time, uh with the grammar school right in town uh and a lot of kids that walk around and play and ride bikes in town, they feel pretty strongly. From my understanding of this, the councilwoman could stop me and say I'm wrong, that they really don't want it, I mean, it's.
I I'm not gonna say you're wrong, but I'd like to clarify, but you can say, oh, you wanna.
No, the question was, I thought there was, doesn't the ordinance have something about distance to residential zones?
Yeah.
Already in there?
Yeah.
Like, I I thought that.
Well, that's what I want to declare, clarify, if you don't mind. Uh first of all, um uh I obviously I was not on council when this was passed last year, so I can't speak to my peers as to what they were, what they, what they knew or didn't know or understood or didn't understand when they passed it. So I'll I'll uh use that, say that caveat first. I do remember as a planning board member that there was some discussion, I don't necessarily remember what the resolution said from here up, but there was a lot of discussion on this board last year when we were asked to review it of and concern about DB and DV two and just anywhere, anywhere but the, but the highway. Um whether that got into the resolution and that was sent up with our concerns to council, I honestly don't remember, but I know that I had a concern with the um with the uh uh locations, especially downtown, because, and this goes to your question, Jeff. Um although we have residential, single family, residential, you know, um uh uh you know, two to four and, you know, multifamily areas um defined, it's amazing how many residents are in our DV and DV two and VAS. So like I said, setting aside what the previous council discussed on this matter, the current council, if I, if I under, if I kind of uh can interpret some of the comments that were made um on this correctly um and represent what some of the concerns were of my fellow councilmen now, it would be that we were recognizing, number one, that initially, the, as as Jay mentioned, the parking could be um and a little bit of a, too much of a burden at this time. And not that we don't want active DB or DB two, but at this time, we thought initially, this might be an issue, but more importantly, uh there was a lot of discussion on council about how DB and DB two, they're residential too. There's a lot of people that live there, not to mention all of the kids that walk from the entire west side of town across down the down Main Street, across Main Street all the way right down this street in front of our, our town hall. So that was another concern. And I guess it's uh on a personal note, uh I walked a lot of, uh and I know that that the mayor did too, walked a lot of this town in the fall and talked to a lot of people and the um, the one, when this particular subject was raised, the issue that I heard most was um specifically it's not, DV and DV two aren't ready for this yet. They wanted to see a more vibrant, more um filling in some of the empty um uh uh retail spaces before a relatively unknown use, how it's gonna get like, like, like that said, it's, it's a little different, a little theory maybe to some people, and I think people need to get used to it. So it was, and these were people that were very much in support of cannabis, voted for recreational, you know, cannabis, these weren't, these weren't people I was speaking to that were against the idea of cannabis. They voted for it as a recreational use when that, that uh uh opportunity came. But they felt that maybe it was just a little early, and like I said, um I was uh I was surprised um when the, when it was passed last year, that DV and DV two and VAS were still in here. Um but I, I, and I, I'm at fault for not watching those, those particular council meetings last year, so I really.
I want to make sure everyone has a chance to. I want to make sure everyone has a chance to talk, so.
I'm sorry.
First, is there any questions that you have of Beth or of Jay or anything that you wanted to add? Yeah, okay, Dennis. We can't hear you, Dennis, sorry.
I would just comment that um, it's two businesses and it sounds like they want to be on the highway and. Um, it could always be changed later.
Okay, Jay, anything you want to add?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay.
Where is the VAS district?
It's Village Artist Shopping, it's mostly turntable, turntable, village.
It's like commercial, it's not residential.
Something's limited there, yeah. Karen, anything else?
Yeah, um, not questions, but definitely thoughts on it, I mean, I I I think it's pretty inconsistent myself, um. I, I feel like it's, if if parking's a concern. Um, you know, we are trying to bring things that, you know, will attract people to. Uh, Main Street specifically, and. This just completely flies in the face of that. Um. Also, I mean, a matter of access for people who in the borough who cannot walk, or sorry, who cannot drive and stuff like that, um. This makes it exceedingly difficult for them, uh. You know, obviously cannabis retailers are probably going to be concerned about parking and whatnot, so. They might naturally just gravitate somewhere with highway access, but I I think it's exceedingly restrictive. To not even give them the chance to. Go in these districts if they want to.
As a break.
Jim. Um, I have to go along with what. That was being said by a traffic engineer and the fact that. Very quick look see for, you know, issues with regard to cannabis markets, if they they're saying this is two thousand and fifteen, had ten times the traffic. Flow that other retailers did. I doubt very much it's changed that much between now. Now and back then, uh, and it is. Up to it. So I would go along with not having it downtown. Wait for the future. See if that's worth it.
And my only question is, there is nothing in the ordinance is now about abutting residential, so all the things about.
This is, this is a change to the.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you won't find it in what was uh, in the amended ordinance, but if you look in the borough zone districts where it is permitted for cultivators, they have a two hundred foot setback to a. Uh, single family district. So to the TR and the SF district, so those are for cultivators. Can you clarify, because I was confused on this trip council, so maybe I'll understand it better here. You clarify. How many maximum retailers there are? How many maximum cultivators there are? And. Uh. Like, can there be? One retailer and one cultivator and that's it? Or two retailers and no cultivators and that's it? Like, is there, is it two or four? I'm very confused about that. Uh, I think the language is confusing. Interpretation of this ordinance is that it permits two cultivators, it says cannabis cultivator two, this limitation is inclusive of recreation cultivators and medicinal ones, essentially. It also says cannabis retailer two, limitation is inclusive of dispensary, recreational dispensaries and medical dispensaries and alternative treatment centers. So you can have two total of recreational dispensaries, medical dispensaries and alternative treatment centers, and then two total. Of recreational cultivators and medical cultivators. And so that means this is four, and I know there are other people on the planning board that only thought it was two last year when we reviewed it, or when we reviewed the ordinance originally, I'm sure of that.
But isn't it true to your point, cultivators are different, but than. Mater is, is is the generation of the product, the the. The retailer is the seller, so we are only running two.
Under the state regs, cultivation facilities have minimum sizes of the lots they're on, there's security regulations and all sorts of other stuff. And I don't know if there is actually a. Spot in town. That meets the current state regs for cultivators, except for maybe, except for maybe some.
For the future.
Because you could do a lot consolidation, you could sell in fines, you could snatch up a couple of different properties and create one that meets the minimum size.
Route twelve, the route twelve.
Right, so perhaps like some places on the south end of Route twelve might. For getting flood issues, um, perhaps there might be on. Uh, two oh two. You know, there might be a handful of places, but certainly you'd be.
It's certainly more restricted just by the. So retailers, we're restricted to two, we already have one, so. One more basically.
Okay, so as Kara, as a process thing, because I think we've we've heard from from everybody, and I want to kind of move forward. Um, I know that Kara, you said you wanted to have votes and recommendations separately, so I think. Folks might agree with me, um, the um, first ordinance that Deb talked about, which is. Oh, two, which really the change was about inclusion of. The, you know, on page. It's at page five oh six, or if you took the document from the council meeting sixty nine, uh, recreational dispensaries and recreational cannabis cultivators, those gold phrases, right? Change, so what I would ask for is if we could get a. Um, it's on the agenda, we don't actually amend the agenda, so. Item eight on the agenda is a re, is a resolution twenty twenty three oh seven. Word consistency determination regarding ordinance twenty three oh two, which is the one, which is the one I'm talking about. Um. Can we please? We can get a motion in a second. Um, and then we can talk about whatever conditions or recommendations we might want to add to that. To find that this is. Substantively not inconsistent with the goal, with with the borough's master plan. Right, Kara, that's what, that's, those are the magic words?
Yep, substantially not, not substantially, not substantially inconsistent.
Thank you, okay, so I need a motion and a second for what will be planning board resolution twenty twenty three oh seven. Give them, have a second? Jim, thank you. Is there any, um, are there any recommendations or? Is it recommendations for our word, Kara? Yeah, recommendations that we would want to make regarding that this particular. Um, ordinance from council.
The only recommendation I could think of, because I know the number, we all participated, many of us participated in this last year as well, thinking it was two, so theoretically. Because we're already overly restricted, right, saying two retailers. If you open. I'm I'm just, from a clarification perspective, I want, just want to make sure that I understand what the council is looking for. If I open up a cultivator, right, at one point it was um, the training place, uh, uh. Northland, somebody was looking at that, if I open up that, that as a cultivator. And I sell my product. Am I now two, or am I still one?
I don't think the statement should do that.
No, okay, good, all right, because that was my only question on whether or not you could be one of mutually exclusive of each other.
Yeah. So, so that's.
So I could have a, have a question, are we only voting? Changes that are being proposed to this?
What we are, what we are asking is, the the motion, sorry, the resolution would say that we. Find that ordinance twenty, council ordinance twenty three dash oh two. Is not substantially inconsistent with the master plan, and that one is the one that talks about. License fees and adds the recreational dispensaries, recreational cannabis cultivators.
So we're only, we're only keeping that in mind.
Just that one.
But that's really what we're voting on, is if it's not, if it.
Then is there anything we want to add about?
If it's not.
Yeah.
In inconsistent.
Correct. And then we'll get to the other one.
Right.
Right, so if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, you've got a motion that this ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh two is not substantially inconsistent. With the master plan and we are not making any recommendations.
It does not sound like there are recommendations from the board on this one. Okay. I think, could you color roll this?
Yes. Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
And Mr. Samina?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to move to the other ordinance, which is. Uh, council ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh four, which will be our planning board resolution twenty three dash oh eight. In terms of consistency or inconsistency, and this is the one where we probably spent more time talking about. Primary access from Sider County roadway, DB, DB two, VAS. Was really the. The the chunk of what the operative clauses are there, so. Is there a motion to, is someone, I need a motion and a second to move. Planning board resolution twenty twenty three dash oh eight, finding um, that this. Ordinance is not substantially inconsistent with the borough's master plan. Double negative dress chats.
Angle hat moves.
I have a motion and I have a second.
With the second, I'm sorry.
Eleven.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there were notes here on this one, right, there was a question about, are there actually any county roadways in town? And should that language appear or not? Right, and then the other one that I heard, Kara, around that was. A recommendation that primary access might need to be at least one access point, rather than using the words primary access. One or more.
Yeah.
One or more access points shall be from a Sider County roadway in. Sub clause H of sections one, two F, five F, ten H and eleven F. Those are two things I heard. Were there any other things that we wanted to? Convey?
So we're now limiting it totally to the Sider County highways?
It would. The limit, it's, it appears that, yes, that's what they're, that's what the ordinance says. And a vote yes is that you find it. Not substantially inconsistent.
Right, so can we just, can we just clarify that last comment, so? If one of the recommendations is to remove the reference to county. Is it that, is that what we're including in here? I just, I want to make sure, I know.
I I think, I think, I think, Kara, the recommendation is. Is. There do not appear to be any county roads in the borough. If the intent was to include. Things like Ferran and Main Street or South Main Street or whatever was, it's, there's some confusion. And they would, they might want to. Clarify what the intent was. Or, or if they choose to leave it in there for some future. County designation or something, something, that's their choice of course, but they, that, that's, that's the discussion that I heard.
Okay, I got it.
And if there is, even though it is a, say, our recommendation was access one or more to a state roadway. It is a state roadway within these districts. Which I just want to make sure that there are. Um. Yeah, I guess there, there would be, there are some districts that have access to state like VAS, right? Uh, VAS, which would not be permitted because you have to cross reference that. Not permitted in this zone, even though it's permitted on state highway. Even though there's, you know, five hundred feet of.
We have, but the zone use trumps the.
Right.
Yeah.
So. For the purpose of this particular ordinance, the board might want to think of this as. Generally. Relegating cannabis uses to the HR district. Because if you look at your, at your zoning map. And you really have two commercial districts that are along state roads, it's. Which are, are of course Route twelve and Route two oh two, Route twelve. Um, includes the uh, the VAS district, which is going to be eliminated from having that as permitted use, and then we have. Um, the HR district along Route two oh two. We have limited areas of CB, HR and TC district on the south side of. Of Route twelve as well. Um, but, and. But I think we should think about the future as we talk about rezoning and sort of. Amending some of those zone districts in the future based on master plan recommendations. Um. The other item is, you know, so I think this ordinance should in part be viewed with what the likely zoning ordinance looks like in a rezoning map, looks like in a few years from now. And so I can't tell you exactly what that's going to be, because we literally have a subcommittee to work that out, but um. But one of the things I'm looking at as we talk is it permits, um. It permits cannabis in the PO district, for example, but we're talking about eliminating that, so. So that's why I say, think about, you know, our, think about this ordinance, we can actually master. Like our master plan. Recommend getting rid of, you know, social scene events.
Super councils to back on, local councils.
Right, but we're trying to look at this like it is. In relation to the master plan, not into, not to what the zone says now, so that what you're trying to say. What I'm saying is, I think it's important that we look at what the zoning says in the uh, in the ordinance, but I can't help but read this and look at how the PO district is going to be amended and. And recall the fact that one of the recommendations from this board is that the PO districts can be eliminated, just as an example. So. The PO dish, professional office district was recommended for elimination. Um, so I just say that, I'm sorry to potentially thrown out confusing details, we're trying to get through the vote, so I'm sorry, but um.
That's all good.
But. As I look at your zoning map now and what changes are made, and I think about the master plan, I think we're largely talking about putting these uses on. Uh, in your HR district, which is largely along. Uh, Route two oh two right now, just by virtue of how the map is laid out and how the. Ends in the various recommendations.
All right.
But you're saying that should be a recommendation, because I think.
It's not thinking it's a recommendation, she think as we're thinking about votes.
Yeah, this is really.
The resulting impacts of adoption of this ordinance essentially would be as.
It's an over, admittedly is an oversimplification, but the, as it's complicated, as we talk about different zones and roads, etc., and potential changes. At the end of the day, that's, that's going to be the, the big. Impact of this ordinance. It might not, you know, there's some nuance to that, but generally speaking.
I need you to color roll this.
Um, so we have all the recommendations.
Director, they're, they're, yeah, the, the recommendations had to do with. The um. Language around the state county roadway, Kara, you've got those, right?
And the primary access, so one or more uh, access points.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna warn it to, to say that the, the council should review its intention with regard to county roadways. And if they meant to include areas like Walter Ferran, because technically there is no county roadways within the borough. And then the other recommendation would be that the language be changed to say. One or more points of access from a state or county road.
Mrs. Inglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
No.
Mr. Carroll, or Mayor Carroll, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um. Mr. Dasha?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Ms. Giffen?
No.
Ms. Weitzman?
No.
Mr. Hill? Mr. Samina?
Yes.
All right, so I lead, what were those final numbers?
We have. Three yes and. Six no.
Okay. All right, so what I will do is, uh, in that resolution, I'll amend it to incorporate that information. Uh, find it to be substantially inconsistent. And outline the reasons why based on the discussion. And at that point, the council, when it goes back to them, they will take a look at the reasons for inconsistency and make their requisite findings and and vote accordingly.
All right, thank you, everyone, I know this was. Detailed, which is why I wanted us to have time to read through everything, and I appreciate that everyone. Spent two weeks thinking about this and able to, uh, have a good discussion, uh, tonight. Jay, um, we're going to excuse you, uh, for the last. Jay, um, we're going to excuse you, uh, for the last probably minute and a half of the meeting, but, uh, we said you could go after the cap this discussion.
Um. Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, no problem, uh, eleven on the agenda tonight is our chair items, um, our next meeting is on March fourteenth. Um, I I did put this in an email to everyone, but just to put it on the record publicly, uh, because Kara is, is on the mend and we hope she feels better soon, uh. We're going to defer the discussion of recommendations on the bylaws and, um, updates to our next meeting, so we'll do that under. Chair items on the fourteenth, is there anything else on the fourteenth?
No.
We did say that the subcommittee for the master plan would report back on the fourteenth.
Okay, so we'll have those two items, uh, for the fourteen, we don't have any. No completeness, no, no public hearings, no resolutions.
Just in secret views that I know.
That we know of, um, council, is there anything that we're planning on coming in on the thirteenth? That we might want to just be a heads up on?
There was nothing on the agenda that would bump down to us yesterday.
Okay, um. So it should be a relatively short meeting on the fourteenth, it just currently be those committee reports, um, so we can have some time for that. We get the work done, it's great, all right, uh, that'll be that, um. We do have, uh, this was communication with, um. The applicant's attorney and engineer, uh, for the spice factory application and. We anticipate that that public hearing will be on March twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Uh, they have not officially noticed yet, but that's we're anticipating, uh, that's going to be.
Yeah, Kara.
Um, in regard to that, something, um. What Eileen sent to us this week? The response to H P C's comments and.
We should be careful about not talking about it without them, but.
Well, I want to ask a point of order generally, then I'll just say, um. Is, which last question? Is it normal for a demolition permit to be issued before a hearing for an application?
That's a Jeff Klein problem.
Yeah.
I I don't understand how that is consistent with, um, the application process.
Because technically, and I I I'm right there with you. But technically, at the moment. That property, that lot four is not in the. Um. Jurisdiction of the H P C, it's not in the, it's not in the map.
I don't, I don't, I'm not really, not relating it to being in the jurisdiction of the H P C.
Yeah.
It is in a.
I I I completely, I I hate to be a pain. Hold on, hold on, hold on, I hate to be a pain, but I know that you're phrasing this as a general question. But it is specific to exactly what's going on right now, and to the extent that. We can wait and have this public discussion, um, when the applicant is here, I think, I think we're better off doing that. If you have questions regarding when demolition permits can be issued, give Jeff a call. Um, anybody has any specific legal question, call me, but I really not like to talk about this, because even though we're talking generally, it is specific to this application.
So can we ask for Jeff to be at the public hearing to answer that?
The board can always request that someone appear.
It's been given as evidence.
But how about if they start to rip it down before the meeting?
All right, so we, please, we cannot do this, we're going to run the risk of having an applicant. Say that we're doing something wrong, please, let's not put us in that.
We're not going to talk about, we're not going to talk about it, but, um. Um. I'm 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 sharing the frustration, um, about this, so, um. Yeah, all right, uh. Bills, we're circulated? Those were all fixed, Kara, right?
Yes.
Those were good?
Yes.
All right, I can motion on the bills.
Move.
Second call.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Semina?
Yes. Uh, traffic engineer is not here, the engineer is not here, planner, do you have any professional reports?
I do not.
Other than, uh, committees better do their homework.
Yeah.
All right, Kara, do you have any professional report?
No, nothing other than, uh, you know, what's been circulated, if, um. Anybody else has, uh. On the subcommittee has any other comments, that's fine, just wanted to. Let everyone know the way I tried to do this is to put in some things as changes that I definitely thought for purposes of clarification or correction. Needed to be made, some as discussion points, um, some as questions, so, you know, it's a little bit of everything in there, uh, the point. Is really from how I saw it, to put a fluid document before the board for discussion. I think that would probably lend to. A, um. More expeditious resolution of the creation of a document that you can vote on. But if I'm looking at this wrong and anyone would rather prefer that a completely changed or amended document be. Established by the subcommittee and presented to the board, that's fine too, I just want to make sure I'm on the right track, I guess.
No, I I think what you've done is fine, Kara, I think that there were things, having a red line version is helpful, and I think that. We can have a good discussion at our next meeting and then the subcommittee can take that, um. Take what they hear back and then come back. Um, to the full board for something that's complete and ready off for for doshing.
All right, thank you.
Uh, no need to go to an executive session, I'm sorry, Trent is about, um. Sorry. Can I get hold on for the first resolution for Donald Trump?
I can't hear you.
Did he vote for Hillary?
Uh, let me just check, I think.
I think it marked, uh, is absent there on the.
Yeah, that's what, I was on the resolution, that's where I took that from.
I have recordings from it, so I was.
Well, were you there on for the November fifth?
I voted. Which? That this is from before. Any of the May, February, right, September. No, I might have completely misread it.
For the January twenty fourth, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because this was. No, it wasn't, it wasn't, right, it was. This was the public hearing, and.
Was he there in November?
No, he was, did you bring that, he was, he was there.
Yeah, according to the minutes, he was there.
And he voted, um, for it on approvals. So we would have caught that if you hadn't missed the meeting.
Right, I was going, unfortunately, I I. I looked at the resolutions, so how can we correct that, Karen?
We can redo that, can we redo another, Kara?
Yeah, we definitely can, we just, we missed him on the vote or we added somebody, I mean, you're you're going off my list.
I I did look at that earlier because, um, you do have a a footnote there, um, because I had inadvertently called, um, Mr. Shro. And Mr. Apple, and so both of those were coming out and, but it did seem odd that there was. Seven that were, um.
No, we missed, we missed.
I I think I I messed up with it with Trent.
So, so can we report this? No, I mean, but can we report his vote? Kara, is that, is that okay?
Uh, yeah, we could re, I mean, let's do another vote with the correct individuals just to put it on the record, so we're.
No, we want to get. We are re-voting, we are re-solving on P D resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six one six one. Don J L L C block thirty seven lots fourteen and fifteen, one six two and Main Street, approval of major cyclone variances and design.
Right, and motion was made by Mayor Carroll, and seconded by Ms. Inglehart.
So let's recall and roll.
Mayor Carroll? Yeah. Mrs. Inglehart?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Semina?
Yes. All right, thank you for catching up. All right, no need for executive session?
No, but we're on professional reports, Kara, you said something, I just have a question, so if we're having. Discussion, when I saw the subcommittee reports on the fourteenth now. I assumed that it was a report, but there wasn't necessarily discussions, because I'm not here on the fourteenth. So, um, and you, you just made a suggestion, you said, well, you know, you know, if you, you. You were asking how to give input, so if I had input to that, what is the appropriate way? I may be able to call in, I'm going to be on the road, but I'm not certain, but should I send a note, like what is, what is the thing to participate?
Uh, there's nothing legally required one way or the other, so, um, unless the chair has a particular way that he'd prefer you do it. Uh, you could shoot me an email, you could shoot Eileen an email. Um, just.
I would say the two things to do would be for Todd to send an email to both Eileen and to Kara. Belts and suspenders, as Kara calls it, um. Just so that we've got a copy of it, but it works secretary and that. Um, Kara, you could, as you're reporting on the subcommittee, um. As appropriate, just report on what Todd's. Um. Notes were, where where's, where it fits, I trust it.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, good. All right, anything else? Pleasure to adjourn.
Second call.
For the favor, say aye.
Thanks, everybody.
See you, Kara, feel better.
Thank you, take care.